Testing stream audio check one, two.
Good morning, Council Fortini checking in.
Thank you, Council Fortini. We can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
As we begin today's meeting, we'd like to acknowledge that we're here today on the Treaty territory of the Mississauga as the credit First Nation. Before them, the traditional territory of the Horusnee here on Owenda. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem, be followed by a moment of personal reflection. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Thank you. I see all members are present in the chambers except for members Fortini and Power. Do we have them online?
Through you, I have Council Fortini online.
I'm sure Council Power is...
Council Power will be joining us shortly.
Okay. We have a number of revisions to the... And Council Power is here. We have some revisions to the agenda, and I'll have the clerk go through them.
Through you, Mayor Brown. There's a number of revisions have been added to our agenda. 6.3 announcement has been added. 7.1 delegations related to item 10.4. Information report response to delegations on committee of adjustment fees. Delegations have been added. 8.1 government relations matters. The presentation has been added. 10.2.3 staff update. The report and presentation have been added. 10.3.5 staff report 2024 year-end reserve report. A revised report has been added. 10.4.2 staff report development approvals, process technology assessment. The report's been added. 10.4.3 staff report regarding Niwos Brahmi Lee application for funding. The report's been added. Summary of recommendations from planning and development committee has been added. Correspondence from Mark Denardis regarding planning and development committee summary of recommendations. Correspondence has been added. Number of correspondence items have been added under 4.2. Related to the information report response to delegations on committee of adjustment fees. Any communications that came in this morning, after the revised agenda was updated this morning, will be added to a post-agenda and become part of the public record as well, just if anybody doesn't see theirs on there yet. 18.1 bylaw 81 2025. The bylaws been added. Bylaw 18... Sorry, 18.2 bylaw 82 2025. The OPA reference was noted. And 18.13 bylaw 93 2025. The bylaws been added. And 18.14, the bylaws been added.
Thank you. And we have some other additions on the list. Councilor Tor.
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown. Want to add an announcement to recognize three young individuals that have performed at various city events. You know, the mayor wanted to recognize them specially last month during the heritage month, so I would like to take the opportunity to do that today. Thank you.
I think the request from Councilor Tor is to have that first on the agenda because they have to go to school, and we don't want us to have the Miss Eckmore school than they already are. So the clerk will note that. Next up, we have Councilor Brar.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add an announcement from the Ontario Cricket Academy for the Women's and Girls Championship, and they also have announcement to make. Thank you.
Okay, great. Council Power has their announcement.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if the clerk captured the announcement, but we have an announcement for the Brampton youth partnership.
Okay. Is that also the Amazon announcement? Same one? Okay. Okay. And then Councilor Plessy, I believe you have an item to add too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an in-camera discussion item about property acquisition. Do you need the whole... Kick it over to Samir for the...
I believe it's exceptioncy. Okay. We have the amended agenda moved by Councilor Plessy, seconded by Councilor Visante to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor? Motion carries. Declarations of interest on the municipal conflict of interest act. Do anyone have declarations of interest? Councilor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So declaring conflict on 10.2.3, the new mobile licensing. We own a family restaurant, and I just want to make sure that there's full transparency that it doesn't have any type of conflict, so I'm just doing this in abundance of caution.
Councilor Brar.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. It was also for 10.2.3. I do have members of my family who are taxi drivers, so in the report, if we can vote on that separately, if that's possible, I can go.
Okay.
Thank you.
The clerk will so note. This takes us to council minutes before us today, April 30th, 2025. Do any members have questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, I have motion moved by Councilor Brar, seconded by Councilor Keenan to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our consent motion. 8.1 government relations. 10.2.1 staff report accountability and transparency policy.
I am holding government relations. I apologize.
We'll hold that. 10.2, staff report closed session meeting protocol. 10.2.3 staff presentation report update consultations, new mobile licensing bylaw. Hold. Staff report capital project financial status. Year-end investment report 10.3.2. 10.3.3 staff report building code act annual report. 10.3.4 staff report year-end operating budget. 10.3.5 year-end reserve report. 10.3.6 staff report DCCIL of Parkland and community benefit charge annual report. 10.4.1 staff report information report response to delegations on committee of adjustment fees. I believe there's delegations for that, so hold. At 10.4.2 staff report development approvals, process technology assessment. 10.4.3 staff report Nawas Brahmi Lee application for funding. 10.12.1 minutes committee of council, April 23rd. 12.2 minutes citizen appointments committee. 12.3 minutes governance and council operations committee. 12.4 summary of recommendations committee of council, May 7th. 12.5 summary recommendations planning and development committee. 14.1 correspondence from Mark Denardis, Gagian Walker, Domes. 14.2 correspondence information report response to delegations. 16.1 referred matters list. 19.1 closed note to file. 19.2 closed session minutes citizens appointments committee. I believe that requires direction? So hold. 19.3 closed session minutes committee of council, May 7th. 19.4 closed report three-year information technology roadmap and 311 technology modernization. 19.5 closed discussion re-potential acquisition of land. That's held. Okay. The clerk will summarize, and then we will move the consent motion.
Through you, Mayor Brown. I'll just clarify. Councilor Plessy, you were holding 10.2.2, the closed session meeting protocols, but not the accountability and transparency policy. Is that correct? There's two separate reports. Government... Government... Yes. Okay. Government relations. Okay. So, through you, Mayor Brown. The following items will be included on the consent motion. 10.2.1 staff report accountability and transparency policy. 10.3.1 staff report capital project financial status report Q4 2024. 10.3.2 staff report 2024 year-end investment report. 10.3.3 staff report building code act annual report for fiscal year 2024. 10.3.4 staff report 2024 year-end operating budget. 10.3.5 staff report 2024 year-end reserve. 10.3.5 staff report 2024 year end reserve report. 10.3.6 staff report DC CIL of Parkland and community benefit charge annual report. 10.4.2 staff report development approvals, process technology assessment. 12.1 minutes committee of council, April 23rd. 12.2 minutes of the citizen appointments committee. 12.3 minutes of the governance and council operations committee. 12.4 summary of recommendations committee of council, May 7th. 12.5 summary of recommendations planning and development committee. 14.1 correspondence from Mark Denardis. 14.2 correspondence regarding information report. 16.1 referred matters. 19.1 closed note to file. 19.3 closed minutes committee of council, May 7th. 19.4 closed report three-year technology roadmap and 311 modernization. And that's it for the consent motion.
Favor? Motion carries. This takes us to announcements. In terms of the agenda, I know we moved the youth up first, so would that be the new 6.1A? So Counsel Tor, if you want to do the introduction?
A brief introduction, but if Mayor Brown, you want to say a few words as well? Because I know you wanted to recognize them. So these three young kids, I've had the pleasure of seeing them grow up over the years because they've been performing at so many of our various city events. Zorawer Singh, Sahib Akhore and Gurbas Singh. They play amazing music at all our events. You can see that in the photo here. It's, you know, they sing the Sikh National Anthem, as we call it, at all the Sikh Heritage Month events, not just in Brampton, but I've seen them perform in other cities as well. So thank you so much for everything you do, all the art that you learned. Thank you to your mom. That probably takes you to music lessons and classes and make sure that you guys are well dressed for meetings like today. But thank you once again for enriching our culture and sharing your talent with us and the rest of the city.
Yeah, and just to add to that, Counsel Tor, every year you do such an incredible job singing the Sikh National Anthem, so beautiful. That I just think that we want to celebrate your talent. And I remember saying to Deputy Mayor and Counsel Tor and Counselor Brar that, boy, you are so talented. I wish we had a video of your singing that we could show everyone here, but maybe when we, the city's social media shares this photo that we present the certificates, we could also have a link to the video from that day because I think a lot of people in the city would be so impressed. I think one day we're going to say we knew those kids. So congratulations and know that you've got a lot of people in the city who are very, very impressed with you. And I'll ask members of council to join me as we present these certificates. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mayor Brown and Brampton City Councilors for the kind acknowledgement. We are truly honored and humbled to be recognized by such dedicated leaders. Brampton Strength lives in its diverse and engaged community and we are proud to be part of it. Your recognition inspires us to continue working towards positive change. Thank you again for this meaningful gesture.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well. And enjoy the rest of the day at school. Blame Counsel Tor for saying that you have to go first. Okay. Next up, we have the four proclamations today. And the first proclamation is for African Union Renaissance Week. And the African Union Renaissance Week symbolizes the rebirth, empowerment and transformation of the African continent embracing its rich cultural heritage, innovation and a vision for a brighter future. Africa's history is a testament to its resilience, diversity and spirit of unity that has led to tremendous progress and continues to inspire nations across the globe. The African Union Renaissance Week offers an opportunity to reflect upon and celebrate Africa's achievements in various fields, including culture, technology, science, education, politics and arts. The African Union Sixth Region Global serves as a premier institution and principal organization dedicated to galvanizing, engaging, educating and embracing the African diaspora with a mission to drive Africa's socioeconomic development and enhance its global influence. This African Union Sixth Region Global fosters unity, innovation and sustainable growth, advancing the interests of the continent's people. During this week, we invite individuals, communities and organizations to honor Africa's legacy, recognize the achievements of African nations and engage in activities promoting unity knowledge and progress across the continent and beyond. This week shall serve as a call for action for continued collaboration, innovation and respect for Africa's contributions to the global community. And this is proclaimed from May 25th to June 1st. Do we have a representative here? Okay, come on to the front. Miriam.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And good morning, our mayor, our Honorable Excellency Mayor Patrick Brown. We are honored to be here. My name is Ambassador Miriam Adam for Trade and Tourism and Culture for African Union Sixth Region. And I'm here on behalf of Honorable to receive the, on behalf- I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. It's the first time I ever been here, so I'm a bit nervous. But it's okay. It's a good thing. I'm here today on behalf of our Secretary General, the African Union Sixth Region globally, Her Excellency Dr. Macaulay Kalu and the African Union Sixth Region. This proclamation of the African Renaissance Week, which starts with the celebration of the 62, 62nd anniversary of the African Union with raising of our African Union flag in the city of Brampton. We are very proud to be recognized by the mayor of Brampton and the city of Brampton and do not take it for granted, but we will work it to impact, to transform lives, which is, I am as a Bramptonian, very proud to be here to represent our community, to transform lives, collaboration with the community. Thank you very much. And this is, we're here to receive and happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to present this proclamation to you, but we've got four proclamations to present. So just sit tight and we're going to have council take this photo with all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next proclamation is going to be read out by Counsel Tor, who is the Chair of our Economic Development Committee, and this is for Business Continuity and Resilience Week, May 19th to 23rd.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Whereas Business Continuity and Resilience Week is an international event that will take place during the week of May 19th to the 23rd, 2025. The Brampton Emergency Management Office Business Continuity Program evaluates risks faced by the corporation and helps develop plans and strategies to ensure the continuation of municipal services despite planned or unexpected disruptions. This year, BMO will be sending out daily tweets as a reminder of actions that can be taken to improve resiliency for city services and our Brampton business community. Reminders will be sent to department leaders to review and update their continuity plans. The city of Brampton will post information on the internal and public sites, sharing strategies on how staff and businesses can build more resiliency. This is an opportunity to raise awareness around business resiliency and to encourage organizations to develop, review and revise their continuity plans while documenting strategies that will ensure the continuation of vital services. For those looking to create continuity plans and develop further resiliency within their organization, more information can be found on Brampton's emergency management website. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim May 19th to 23rd, 2025, as Business Continuity and Resilience Week in the city of Brampton.
And we have a member of the Economic Development Department that looks-
This is actually through BMO.
BMO, okay, so we'll have a representative here to accept?
I will accept and nothing to add.
Okay, so we'll do a photo with the proclamation after, okay. The next proclamation is something that Counsel Power is passionate about and that relates to the 7.2 delegation, and that's for International Boys' Day, which is May 16th.
It's not related to our boys.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. International Boys' Day, observed annually on May 16th, is a global day of recognition that highlights the value and potential of boys while addressing the unique challenges they face. The day raises awareness around issues such as educational decline, mental health struggles and the need for positive male mentorship. It serves as a platform for communities, schools and institutions to celebrate boys, support their development and affirm their place in society as future leaders, builders and changemakers. Boys-led network is a Brampton-based nonprofit organization committed to the holistic development of boys and young men through mentorship, leadership, training, educational support and community engagement. Boys-led network is also actively involved in the community beautification and civic responsibility as, and has had adopted a park in Brampton as part of its commitment to creating a safer, youth-friendly spaces. During the week, International Boys' Day, Boys-led Network and its partners will host a series of community-based and digital events. These activities aim to raise awareness about the unique challenges boys face, foster community engagement and celebrate their contributions by highlighting the importance of mentorship, education and emotional wellbeing through initiatives seek to instill civic pride and encourage collective efforts to support the development of boys in Brampton. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim May 16th, 2025, as International Boys' Day in the city of Brampton.
Thank you, Counsel Power, and is there a representative that would like to speak to this? Please come to the microphone.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you so much, Mayor Brown and city council members. Today is very, very, a big day for us, not just as an organization, but to the boys and the young men across the world. You know, and I'm also glad to see that Brampton stands out as the first city to give a proclamation towards International Boys' Day across the world. Our organization is not just advocating for International Boys' Day over here in Brampton. We have a footprint across the world. So, you know, Brampton again takes the lead in championing a change that we have actually expected for policymakers and government to take charge of. As that proclamation has said, boys across the world face several silent challenges and crises. But again, you know, we want to applaud what Brampton is doing and we really do appreciate it. And we believe that this will go beyond the city, the room right now to across the world so that others can also take the lead in championing programs that is specifically for boys and young men in communities and nations across the world. Yes, okay, we have a presentation up there. Thank you. I'll just go to the fourth page. Now, through our programs in schools, faith communities and network mentoring networks, Boys-led network in Canada has reached boys and young men overseas countries. In Canada, we've hosted summits, adopted public spaces and worked closely with communities like Brampton to build safer and more supportive community and environment for boys. As you can see, last year, the same day, May 17th, the organization adopted a park and a Nash Park, and we've been doing an amazing work over there. Please, next slide. This is where our global footprint, we are, the organization started in the United States. We are in Nigeria. We are over here in Brampton-based Ghana, South Africa, United Kingdom. And yeah, please, next page. So that picture was actually taken at the Brampton City Hall for the first global boys' summit that was ever held. And that's the youngest mayor from the United States of America that also came here. He made mayor at 18. So this is our ask for this season. For schools to integrate boys-focused mentorship and awareness. Communities to host local conversations and campaigns. Policymakers to consider boys and mental health. This is very big. So we also invite the city to explore future partnership opportunities that I like, that continue to, I like Brampton as a champion for boys and young men. To this end, I want to say thank you so much to everybody, to the mayor and to all the council members. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have a proclamation we will present to you shortly, so sit tight. Our next announcement is National Accessibility Week, which is May 25th to 31st. The Chair of our Public Works Committee, Paul Visante, where we take accessibility seriously in all our new public works infrastructure, was eager to read this proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. National Accessibility Week was established by the Government of Canada in 2017 and inspired by Rick Hansen's Man in Motion World Tour to celebrate the valuable contributions of Canadians with disabilities and reflect on how we can become a more accessible Canada. More than 27% of Canadians, over 8 million people aged 15 and older, have a disability. The city recognizes that preventing new barriers, reducing and removing existing barriers and enhancing access to our goods, services and facilities is essential to providing increased opportunities that foster independence, inclusion and dignity for all. To recognize National Accessibility Week, there will be a flag raising on May 26th and various activities at select recreation centers at no cost between May 25th to 31st. The city values accessibility, diversity and inclusiveness and the unique contribution that each resident makes to the local community. National Accessibility Week aims to create awareness, celebrate the work of individuals and organizations who are removing barriers and creating accessible and inclusive communities and acknowledge and celebrate the valuable contributions and leadership of Canadians with disabilities. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim May 25th to 31st, 2025, as National Accessibility Week in the city of Brampton.
Thank you, Councilor Visante, and I don't think there's a response for this, is there?
Franco is here.
If not, we'll make sure members of the Public Works staff do a photo with us.
Franco is here.
Oh, Franco, Franco, did you want to speak to this? Come on up.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Council and the mayor for putting this initiative forth. I know the accessibility team at City of Brampton have been working extremely hard to maintain accessibility, so I'm glad to be here and thank you so much.
Well, sit tight, we're going to do a group photo, but we have one last announcement before we take some photos, and that is the one added, a few more announcements, yeah, after that, yeah, yeah, we have the one added from Councilor Burr. I know they have to go to school as well. Councilor Burr, you want to introduce this announcement?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. We have the Ontario Cricket Academy here. I'll call up Tina and Derek if you can make that announcement.
Good morning, Council, Mayor Patrick Brown. I'd just like to give you a little bit of history. I started the OCA Ladies Team back in two thousand and nine to inspire two young girls who went on to represent in the Canadian Women's National Team. For the past sixteen years, facing many challenges that arise in girls and women's cricket, we expanded our roster, creating a women's division in our existing league. This roster now consists of national players, some of them are here with me, leading me to form the first and only women's cricket league in Ontario, which was being played right here in this lovely city of Brampton last summer alongside with the first under fourteen girls, six-v-six in the winter, and we have some juniors here that were allowed to come and take some time off from school. This is the first time our sacrifices and longstanding commitment is finally being recognized, and that is all thanks to this beautiful cricket-dominating city of Brampton. It is because of your support and recognition today that we are able to inspire and be role models to youngsters who want to play and one day maybe go on to represent Canada. Thank you, Council, especially Councilor Navji Barr for this tremendous opportunity. Mayor Patrick Brown, we are truly grateful for the facilities, specifically restrooms at cricket grounds. Thank you to city staff, especially Ken Mayer and his team, in recognizing girls and women's in cricket, and yeah.
Girls' cricket is exploding around the world, and we know Brampton is a hotbed of talent, so really glad that Councilor Barr added this to the agenda. We've got certificates to present to each of you, which we'll do so shortly, and just to say congratulations on your success. It's a really exciting time for cricket in Canada, and particularly in our city.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilor Barr? Oh, I have Councilor Santos and Barr on the board.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Councilor Barr for adding this as Chair and Vice Chair of Community Services and the only two women sitting on this council. We push always, you could ask the Commission of Community Services, the mayor, we always push for more women in sport, and your organization is doing fantastic work to highlight girls in cricket, so you will always have our support. And one thing I will add is that OCA, when I was at that gala that night, I will tell you yet again, Derek, that OCA had the best gala this year, the most energetic and the most fun this year, and it was a pleasure to attend. Thank you for the work you're doing, it's an honor to recognize you, and of course, the girls in cricket.
Don't leave quite yet, Councilor Barr wants to say a word as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief. I just want to say thank you, Tina, for the announcement. I can see, I can feel the emotions in the announcement that you made today, and it means a lot to you, and Ontario Cricket Academy is paving that pathway for girls and women, and Councilor Plessy and I are very lucky to have the award too, and I know right in the beginning, when you guys opened up, we were, we had that meeting, and then we discussed how we can grow further, but having women and girls coming into cricket, it is that barrier that you're breaking, so thank you, Derek and Tina, for making that happen, and thank you again. I know Councilor Santos and I have always been making sure that we're vocal, making sure that women have a space, whether it's sports or arts or any other community program that we have, so thank you again.
Well, sit tight, we have a special presentation for you. I just, we've got two more quick announcements. Councilor Maderos would like to speak to an event that is one of my favorite of the year, the Rotary Rib and Roll. Councilor Maderos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an event since I've been on council, along with Councilor Plessy and Councilor Fortini, that I think the City of Brampton has been one of the hallmarks of our summer festival, and they do a great event with food and music, and it really brings the whole community together, so I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you, Mayor.
And is there a representative from Rotary Ribbon Roll?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Councilor Maderos, for sponsoring this announcement. But really, I'm here to not only thank you, Mayor Brown, as well as all of the City Council for supporting this event, but also to invite you all to come to Rotary Ribbon Roll. It's happening May twenty-third to twenty-fifth, and we would love to see your happy faces in the park. This event is a springtime festival, bringing, as Councilor Maderos said, food, music, and entertainment in a wonderful location altogether. On the entertainment side, we've lined up a great variety of talent encompassing many different genres, so we have some local favorites, the Mark Ekins Trio, Freedom Train to start things off on Friday, the party continues on Saturday with Leo Holton, Little Peter and the Elegance, Mark Ekins Band again, Eighty Hits, Elise Saunders Band in closing with everyone's favorite, Carpet Frogs. Sunday is our designated family day, and we have Battle of the Bands coming once again, which is kind of fun because it's local kids' talent. We also have baton twirling and cheerleading clubs to entertain us, and we're going to follow that up with Lazo and with the Mark Joseph Band, but let's face it, what's a rib fest without ribbers? And we have three dedicated ribbers coming to the event this year. Two are returning ribbers, Brickyard and Razorback, and then we've added a third ribber, and his company is called Big Texas Barbecue, so we're really looking forward to trying those ribs out. And for those of us who don't enjoy finger-licking ribs, I can't imagine, we have plenty of other options available, including various sizes and shapes of fries, poutine, halal chicken, burgers, hot dogs, corn on the cob, popcorn, and loads of other delicious things to tempt your appetite. So, great food, great music, grab a beverage of your choice in a wonderful park, all leads to a wonderful festival, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the setting. I know last year we had to miss because of the upgrades that were being done in the park, but Gage Park is beautiful all year round, especially in the spring after a long winter, so we are really happy to be back in the park. And it's just a perfect environment with the canopy of, you know, trees, and it's just a perfect setting. So, thank you once again for allowing us to be in the park once more. And, having said that, if we are fortunate enough to raise funds, the committee has decided to support Childhood Cancer Canada Foundation once again. We've been supporting this group since Rob Van Kessel started this whole thing many years ago, and of course, he's a member who has passed. So, we would love to share with you just how much community loves this festival, please come on out and join us, and we'd love to greet you there, to see you there.
Wonderful, and just to ask, I know in previous years, I've noticed we've had some local vendors as well, I know Jean from RD's, Heartlake Residence is usually there, is there an opportunity this year to see some of the local vendors part of this too?
Oh, most of them are going to be local vendors.
Amazing.
Okay, and unfortunately, RD's has got some personal issues, he's not going to be able to join us this year, but, oh yeah, we've got Jamie's Cracked Corn, he's my neighbor for crying out loud, he lives right across the road from me. So, yeah, we try to keep it local, that's the whole.
That is good popcorn, yeah.
It is, it's really good popcorn, and so we do try to keep everything local, as local as we can, let's put it that way.
And Councilor Keenan just advised me, and he's not a doctor, but he says it's okay to have ribs three days in a row if it's evolved.
Oh, there you go, I agree, I think three days in a row is just a.
We look forward to seeing you there.
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor Brown.
Our last announcement is sad news, and this was sent to me from Gary Collins, all the way from Newfoundland, on the tragic news that former City Council Bob Hunter passed away, and the city will be paying our condolences to the family, I believe we are lowering our flag, and for those that knew him and remembered his public service to the city, we thank him for his passion for the City of Brampton. Councilor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on Bob Hunter, I've known, I knew Bob since I was a young lad, and I have to say he's just, he was a man that was larger than life, and I remember his hands were like the biggest hands that I've ever seen in my life, he just, but he was, he had this laugh about him, and anytime that, you know, I happened to be at an event with my father or something, he'd make it a point to come over and ask how I was doing, and he was just, he was a kind and gentle person, one of the most gentle people I've ever met, so it's a huge loss, but what an amazing life that this man lived, that's for sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I noticed, I actually missed one announcement, and then we're going to go for all the photos, and that is sponsored by Councilor Power to highlight Amazon sponsorship of our Explore Brampton Youth Pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have an update for Explore Brampton Youth Pass, and I'll ask Mike Nele, our manager of sponsorship, to come down and give us an update on sponsorship.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning. Councilor Power, thank you for sponsoring this announcement. I would like to take this time to highlight a brand-new sponsorship with Amazon in regards to a very important initiative with the Explore Brampton Youth Pass. I'm Michael Nele, manager of sponsorship and corporate development with the City of Brampton. Our team works with all city departments to identify programming, campaigns, events that we can then turn into sponsorship opportunities for our business community. As you know, the City of Brampton announced in late March, two thousand and twenty-five, the continuation of the Explore Brampton Youth Pass program, and we are pleased to announce Amazon as our first sponsor for this great initiative. Passholders of this program will be able to ride Brampton Transit for free and have free access to Brampton Recreation drop-in programs such as swimming, skating, and other sports from July first to September first, two thousand and twenty-five. We're thrilled to share that we are, that we've received applications for over sixty percent of the available spots, and we encourage those still interested to apply. I would like to thank Amazon for stepping up and being the first to support this initiative, and hopefully through these sponsorships, we can continue to expand and grow our city programming. Over the past decade, Amazon has made a significant impact on the Canadian economy and in local communities, from directly investing more than fifty billion in Canada since two thousand and ten, to creating over forty-six thousand jobs across the country. Amazon aims to make their customers and employees' lives better and easier every day, and they apply this innovative spirit within their hometown communities. From giving thousands of Canadian students access to computer science education to donating hundreds of thousands of items to local community organizations, Amazon is leveraging their business to create opportunities for people from all backgrounds. At this time, I'd like to call Jerome Smith, Head of Community Engagement in Canada for Amazon, to join me. I'd also ask Mayor and Council to join for a photo once we do that with everybody, but thank you once again for your time, and thank you to Amazon for sponsoring this very important program.
Councilor Plessy has a hard-hitting question.
No, was he coming down to speak?
No, no.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks, Mike, for the, this is fantastic. I guess first off, we don't, I don't see Zoom up there, but is Zoom one of the, one of the rides they can ride for free as well?
Brampton Transit.
Brampton Transit, but Zoom's always under that different banner, so I just wanted to ensure that they're riding that one as well.
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Is there any opportunity that we can build off of this and maybe work with Metrolinks to see if we can do kind of a co-ride share? If, Metrolinks, I'm sure they would love to be a part of this, is that maybe an opportunity?
We have a wonderful relationship with Metrolinks, so this is definitely something that we can look into.
Great. And then the other question that I have, extremely generous for Amazon to sponsor this, it's clearly because they're located in Word Six, so, which is fantastic, but I'd also like to know, maybe more in the future, can you come back at a future meeting and talk about the other companies that we're working with and what kind of ideas that you have in terms of, you know, where we're going with sponsorships? And maybe we can elaborate on that and see if there's, you know, an overall kind of strategic thinking around the sponsorships and the programs and how it's going.
Yeah, we do an annual report that we can definitely bring all the sponsors and highlight the major investments throughout the city.
Excellent, okay, thanks, Mike. Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilor Keenan, I saw your name on the screen, do you have a question too?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it wasn't necessarily a question, it was just saying, Mike, thank you to you and your team, as we throw a lot of events on here at the city, whether it be New Year's, Canada Day, and so on and so forth, and all that is made possible through sponsorship, and these are great programs for the residents, but none of it happens without you and your team's hard work, hounding, literally hounding these businesses, if it's the mayor's hockey tournament, Canada Day, like I said, New Year's, all those things are, you know, ninety percent, if not a hundred percent, covered by sponsorships, so I just want to highlight you and your team and say thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that covers all the announcements, and now we're going to do the photos, so we've got a long list of photos, ask members of council to join me up front. And we'll do the, those who have to go to school first. And we'll do the, those who have to go to school first. Okay, this takes us to delegations in response to the delegations on committee of adjustment fees. We have Wilson Christian coming up first. Wilson Christian, yes. And we can move up the staff report at the same time.
Yes, good morning, Mayor, and good morning, all council members. My name is Wilson Christian, and I am a Brampton resident. I have an issue like, I bought a property and the closing was in August 2024. And earlier owner had an issue with his basement. So city, from city, somebody gave notice and the basement has to be tear down. And then the permit was issued for the building. So in July, I applied for the basement permit as a law-abiding resident. I wanted legal basement to be there. So I got the permit in September and the work started. There is a sunroom also in my property. So inspector came, my basement was cleared, it's a legal basement, they approved it. But they said that sunroom is having some issues. So we were asked to demolish a partial portion. And also he asked to strong the structure. So he asked certain things to do, which my contractor followed. But the building permit was not issued and I am asked to apply for a permit. And when we applied for a fa- permit, like, you know, it went in a minor variance. During this time, there was a strike in the city, so my work was delayed. And then the Christmas holidays came. So immediately on the 7th of January, as soon as the city opened, like, we applied for the minor variance. But the fee has been increased from $700 to $3,000, which is, I find it like, you know, it is exorbitant for me, fee. And it has been delayed because of certain reasons, which was strike and then the Christmas holidays. So just for like, you know, two days delayed. In January 7th, I made the permit and now I'm told that it has to be according to the new fees at $3,000. So my humble request to consider my plia and see that I can go with the minor variance, with the older fee and whatever the structure needed to be fixed and everything, I am ready to fix it. So my humble request for that to the council members. And I thank Mr. Tour that he has taken the responsibility and he answered my emails and he replied. I'm blessed for that. Thank you for that.
Did you, do you have another question? Did you do a home inspection?
Yes. Inspection was done.
Did they not outline that it wasn't compliant?
Yes, so basement is approved. But for the sunroom, they asked to do certain corrections, which we did. We even demolished a certain portion which, which was touching the fence. Now, no area is touching to any of the side properties, but the permit has not been issued for the building.
So you were told that it wasn't compliant before purchasing? Okay, but otherwise the home insurance could cover that faulty home inspection?
Yeah.
Thank you. Our next delegation is Kathleen McDermott.
Good morning, Mayor Brown and members of council. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Kathleen McDermott, and with me I have Mike Aegis, my partner. We've been residents of Brampton for over 27 years. I'm also here today with members of our community as well as they're joining online. Just to thank you for the great work that you've been doing with regards to increasing the fees for minor variances and the minor variance applications, especially the $12,000 fee for driveway extensions. Not many people want to come up here and voice their concerns. It's not that they don't want to, it's because they're nervous, they don't want to be pointed out. They think there's going to be repercussions. So I'm their voice on behalf of the community. We're speaking up. If you also recall that I was here last June and did a delegation on behalf of our community expressing our concerns about the variance application process and the fees, and that this required urgent revision. We are also pleased that our voices were heard and that as our elected representatives, you responded with these increased fees. It is in our opinion that this fee structure was long overdue and should have been implemented years ago. It is well-known that the minor variance application process has placed a massive administrative burden on city resources and taxpayers. We have been massively subsidizing this process. And the new fee structure now allows for the city to ensure that it's adequate cost recovery in place and that the applicant, applicants are now paying their share versus the taxpayers who are not requesting these variances. The existing bylaws with regards to driveway widths are more than adequate for what is required for a residential property in our single-family neighborhoods. Anyone is able to dra- to expand their driveway width at no cost as long as they meet the bylaw requirements. I myself just widened my driveway and paid for the curb cut fee. And someone did come by from the city to measure and make sure that I was with, that I was compliant. I stayed within the prescribed zoning bylaw and there was no variance fee. It's just that simple. Again, thank you for putting this $12,000 application fee in place to support the ability of our communities to maintain our landscape of our communities. We are already seeing a positive impact on this change. The fee structure also addresses, addresses a critical environmental issue that has been eroding the character of our resilience and resilience of our neighborhoods. Excessive hardscaping. We have witnessed disturbing trend over the expanding, ever-expanding driveways, the transforming of our green spaces, permeable surfaces, and, and into concrete and asphalt. This proliferation of hardscape has had a detrimental, has had detrimental consequences on our environment. We see too many driveways that span across the entire fronts of properties which eliminate the majority of green spaces. Shrubs, trees, and gardens have all been eliminated, which also eliminates the opportunity for proper water absorption. And our infrastructure is already maxed out without this, with all this runoff going into our sewers. This is supposed to be the flower city, not the massive driveway city. As a result of what has been done across the city of Brampton to date with the supersized driveways, we are all suffering from too much hardscape. As a matter of fact, my home flooded twice last year. We all saw the 410 flooded last year as well, something that we thought once was impossible and unimaginable. I understand that there have been several discussions with regards to lowering the fee for driveway extensions. Please do not lower this fee or any of the minor variances fees, as this would be disastrous for the city of Brampton to now reverse course on something when we've made such progress. The community strongly supports keeping all the variance fees, variance application fees in place, especially the $12,000 fee for a driveway extension. Thank you again for your time. Thank you on behalf of our communities for keeping this fee structure in place for all minor variances. I do have one last question for you, Mayor Brown. Will you be using your strong mayor power to ensure that these, this fee structure stays in place?
We've got a few comments. I would say this is a budget amendment, so it would require eight votes to change, for your awareness. We have councillor Maderos, followed by councillor Keenan, followed by councillor Santos.
Thank you for you, Mr. Mayor, and I do recognize your leadership, Mr. Mayor, on this issue. Thank you, Kathleen, for coming forward today. I am supportive of the increased fee. My question really is around, one of the frustrations I'm feeling as a councillor, and I think there's a disconnect with sometimes residents. So this is a measure that we're implementing because we think, and I've heard the comments, that there should be some form of positive effect from this initiative. One of the things that I would like to see from staff, and I just want your opinion on it, is some form of evaluation, performance measures that are robust, that we can share with the community after to say, as a result of us increasing the fees, maybe after a certain time, six months or a year, there's robust information to see if there's a positive narrative around implementing this type of fee structure. So a lot of the issues, and I guess where I'm going at through you, Mr. Mayor, is what is your opinion on all these initiatives that we're doing? Especially when we're trying to protect the quality of life of residents in Brampton, trying to ensure that we don't have, you know, for lack of a better term, landlords who are not respecting our community. I would like to see more robust information. I would like to see more metrics. I'd like to see more performance measures. What's your opinion on, on, on that encompassing, accompanying this type of measure of applying the $12,000?
I think that there has already been an assessment done that determined that the excessive or the high touch point and administrative burden on the city, that the costs that you guys know, that this, the, the fees that were in place, and I think that even were put in place, don't cover the costs of, and we already had a 2.9% tax increase, that they need to, the applicants need to cover their own costs on this. People actually ask me and say, aren't there bylaws in place that people can't do these massive wide driveways? And I said, everyone can apply for a variance at the committee of adjustment. So people assume that the bylaws are protecting this. And then when they see the supersized driveways, they're like, what the hell is going on? So people aren't always informed. We all have full-time jobs. I myself, unfortunately, are very familiar with section 10 of our bylaws. So people just don't know. I think that letting people know that we've put this in place, I mean, seeing the positive impact that we're already seeing, that driveways are not expanding, is the proof people need.
Yeah, and through you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess what I'm trying to go at is that we're seeing it, but I like to see it quantified. And I'd like to see it reported out because one of the things that I find is that there seems to be a lack of faith in sort of, for example, our bylaw officers, or there's a lack of trust there. So I would like to see, you know, and this is maybe in accompanying piece, but as, you know, we revisit this fee structure, that accompanied over time, that we can report out what's been the actual positive impact on our community. There has to be some narrative around.
Go through all your Kobe tickets of people reporting driveways too wide. Someone reported me when I did mine and I was actually three feet under the required width. So I could have gone wider within my, like, I, there's no reason I would need to go wider than what I did. I wanted two cars to fit comfortably and for the mail carrier to walk up the, the walkway safely and not scratch my cars. So I have more than an adequate width. It's the width of my double-car garage. I don't see why anyone would need to go wider than that, and I think the community believes that as well.
Yeah, and I'm not disputing that. I'm saying that we do need some information to come back that is broadly based, that allows us to sort of look at, as a result of us doing, maintaining this $12,000 structure, this is what's been the positive impact.
Look at your Kobe tickets and see the, the number of Kobe tickets for increased driveway complaints going down.
Yeah, and that could be one of the measures. But there has to be some form of common recognized measure so that we can communicate what's been the positive impact of these type of initiatives.
Next time there's a massive flood, if my basement doesn't flood, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Maderos. Next up is councillor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kathleen, for coming in. And, and not only just, you know, the mayor's leadership, but this council table's leadership and your leadership for, in the community for everything that you're doing, it's well noticed. You know, I fought very hard to make sure we can make these changes and, and see an impact. And I've, you know, I want to thank staff for, you know, moving quickly to get those fees where they need to be. I will continue to fight if we think there's going to be a change to lower them, to keep them where they are. Because I know we're seeing the impact, especially in, in wards 3 and 4. And I strongly believe around the city of Brampton. I know we're councillors for certain areas, but we all represent Brampton. And the changes we make individually impact the whole city. And, and I think it's, it's amazing. And just to kind of feed off a little bit of what councillor Maderos was saying, and I think what's important for people to understand is the fees don't just apply that if you are law-abiding and you want to come in and do a variance, you have to pay those fees. What we had a lot in the city is people doing this without, without needing to go there. They say, well, look, I'm going to try and get away with it. And if I get caught, then I'm going to pay 700 bucks, only 700 bucks, I'm going to go for my minor variance. Those individuals now also need to pay the $12,000. And they may not get it approved and they may need to change it. So we're discouraging people from not following the protocol. And I think that's what really needs to be documented. And I'm sure we will, in the reports that councillor Maderos is asking for, that should be included. How many people got caught not going for a variance and now have to pay that $12,000 fee?
I'm going to be doing my backyard and I'm going to be putting in a pool and a gazebo. And I'm happy to pay whatever fee that you put in front of me.
Appreciate that. We, we hope and wish everyone is like you, but the matter of fact is that they're just not. And, you know, so my, my question to you is, are you seeing a, an impact in, in your local community with these changes as far as the fee going? Do you feel that it's, you know, helping?
I absolutely do. We're not seeing supersized driveways coming across with 12 cars in, 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 in front of our, our single-family neighborhoods. So yes.
And, and I do know even within that, in our mature neighborhoods, that those are changing to be made. You know, the, the requirements of what you're allowed to do will be made smaller soon. We are going through that process and have been over the last year. You know, it was at a town hall that myself and councillor Maderos had, that that became the biggest problem. And we acted right away to, you know, have that changed. And that is a long process. It's not something we can do overnight when it comes to, to changing and, and planning. So kudos to the staff for bringing that forward as quick as possible. And I look forward to seeing that and thank you again for your delegation.
Thank you.
Okay, next up councillor Santos with one more question.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and agree wholeheartedly with what councillor Keenan has just shared in terms of the consequences after the fact. And applying for a minor variance after you've broken the rule, $700 is like an easy thing to pay versus $12,000. So hopefully this will deter folks from breaking the rules and then asking for forgiveness later and paying a small fine when in fact it should be $12,000, when in fact it's. later and paying a small fine, when in fact it should be 12,000, when in fact it's now $12,000. And to be very clear, staff did an incredible job at calculating what the cost is that property taxpayers are subsidizing in order to get these applications through, and it really is not fair. You are right, Kathleen, that the applicants should be the ones who are paying the full cost of what it takes to process an application. And just for clarification to what Council Maderos was sharing in terms of a measurable, I believe that we could probably look at the impact based on how many applications are going through to Committee of Adjustment after this change has been made. Because Kathleen, to your point, I don't know if we could use COBIE reference numbers because in your case, for example, you followed the rules. So it may be that there are folks through their complaints and an investigation that people are following the rules versus, versus not. So I think it'll be through Committee of Adjustment that we can take a look at that measurable. The only question that I have, because you brought a very good point, Kathleen, with respect to flooding issues and hard pavement services. We recently implemented a stormwater management charge. So a quick question, I guess, to staff, and if you don't have the answer right now, that's okay. For clarification, if someone applies to extend their driveway through a minor variance and then they get approved, they paid the $12,000 or what have you, are we keeping track of that expansion and what the impact might be on stormwater management? I don't know. I put it out there because it might be an interesting thing for us to also consider.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Council Santos. At the moment, we don't keep track on sort of individual basis, but staff are bringing a report for next month on our stormwater management system, and we can certainly use that report as an opportunity to kind of investigate.
Yeah, and thank you, Steve, for that clarification, because Kathleen brought up a really good point in terms of environmental issues and flash floods. I was at a residence house yesterday who is having issues regarding flash floods and hard pavement surfaces around their area that's causing it. If, if some of these applications are getting approved, it's not just the cost to process the application, but also the longer-term cost and impact on our stormwater management to accommodate more hard surface pavement. So I'm happy to bring that up when the stormwater management charge report comes back, and thank you, Kathleen, for bringing that important point up.
We've asked many times the cumulative effects to be addressed by the Committee of Adjustment when we've attended there with driveway widening as well. So thank you. Just one comment, just with regards to not knowing about the fees or the afterfact of the fees, or just not being aware of them. As a resident of Brampton, it's your responsibility to understand where you live and the rules in which and where you live. If I get stopped for speeding and I say I don't know how fast I was speeding, I'm still getting the speeding ticket. So I want the rules to apply.
Okay. We have a motion moved by Councilor Santos, seconded by Councilor Broward to receive the delegations. All those in favor, motion carries. I'm told we also need to receive the International Boys' Day delegation, moved by Council Power, seconded by Council Maderos. All those in favor, motion carries. We also moved the report up, 10.41. And Council Singh.
Yeah, so I've had an opportunity to look at the fees, and I actually believe in using financial tools to control behavior. So I'm not opposed to the fees. I would just like, I would like to put a referral just so we have a few months, because I've been seeing some exceptions. And I'll give you an example of an exception is wheelchair, I have a wheelchair case. I've had two last term as well. And these aren't going to make a huge impact, but now with, we just had accessible week as well. And, and so sometimes when we do a blanket policy, there's some things we just didn't consider, these one-off exceptions. And so if I do refer it, the fees will stay the same. So we're not adjusting the fees, the fees will stay. If there's any other cracks, we can address them in a few months. I would look at bringing, I'm not, I'd like to take the summer, meet with residents, see if there's any other issues that emerge, and deal with it maybe in September. And the fields, fees will hold, so nobody will be affected. And just, I've had two cases last term, but this term, yeah, they're getting dinged $12,000. And if we can look at some of the exceptions that we might need to do in September, especially related around accessibility, that's all I would ask, and I wouldn't touch the fees in the meantime. Hold them like, I'm okay.
Okay, motion to defer until September. We can look at if there's any other examples like accessibility that may need to be addressed differently. All those in favor, motion carries. Anyone opposed? One. This takes us to accountability transparency on consent, closed session meeting protocols. Council Plessey, you held that.
We have government relations as well.
Oh, we held government relations. We did.
We don't need a presentation on government.
We just have a motion, I believe, for government relations.
You're giving it all to me.
Okay, Councilor Plessey, you have, under government relations, a motion to present.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a motion that I sent to the Clerk's office. I think it's, what I'm trying to do is get staff to undertake kind of an ability to look at, when it's come across our desks, if we're using that analogy today, a few times, where, and the example is, a family lives in a home, it's, you know, it's on, mostly in Word Six, but it's, it's a fairly big, big lot. You know, there's, it's their, the home that they grew up in, and their parents are there, and now the, you know, the kids are, are living, growing their family. But now they've had this opportunity to build a bigger house on the, on the same existing lot, demolish the old house, and continue to, to live with, with their parents. And I want the, what staff to do is the ability to look at not having these people pay for a cash-in-lieu of parkland or development charges, because essentially it's, it's no different than what they're, they're not putting any more burden on, you know, Cassie Campbell or the infrastructure that's in the ground. They're no, they don't need, well, everybody needs a new park, but they don't specifically need something else in terms of parkland around, around their house. So I'd like the ability for staff to look at an opportunity to, you know, to, to come back and, and see what we can do for people that are, that are in this kind of situation. Stephen, it really goes around along the lines of, you know, the bill and whatever bill the province has made, oh, Bill 17. If you want to speak to it at all, Commissioner?
Through the mayor, through to Council Plessey. Certainly part of your government relations update today is a bit of a overview of Bill 17 that was announced earlier this week. A briefing note was sent out by the CEO's office yesterday. That bill touches on a number of things, and to the motion that Council Plessey has before you, it speaks to an overhaul, if you will, of the DC regime and other revenue-generating tools like cash-in-lieu and parkland. This particular motion would give staff the ability to do some research. In cases whereby an individual wants to do a fairly small type of redevelopment on a single lot, the exponential demand on existing parks or infrastructures nominal. So through our analysis of Bill 17 and the direction this motion, we'll look at those cases and bring it back to, for council's consideration.
No, thanks, Stephen. Really, we've, you know, we've kind of talked about this in the past, but we can't get away with, we can't get away from the fact that developers come in, they build communities, which you need parks, you need records centers, you need, you know, all of this added. But in the end, they have one single lot that they're selling to somebody with a house on. So I don't want the ability for developers to come in and wiggle their way through and try and find a loophole with this. This is about helping Bramptonians, existing Bramptonians, you know, and the latest one is, it wasn't even a big house that they were building, but $93,000, or 63,000, $63,000 just in cash-in-lieu alone, not even development charges. That's not helping. So thanks. I appreciate us looking into, into this and look forward to this coming back to a future council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Councilor Broward, all those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to, we actually have an added delegation, I was reminded of by Council Santos, it was added this morning, and that is Deep Carrot. Do you want to come up now?
Is this regarding the food truck?
Yes. You requested a delegation this morning?
I sent it yesterday with four of us. We sent an email.
So this is your turn.
Awesome. All right, so thank you so much.
One delegation for all of you to speak. So would they like to join you?
Yes, please, if they can.
Now's the time to join you. So you have a total of five minutes.
Yeah. So thank you so much to all the councillors, Mayor Brown, and the city staff, and especially to Kevin, who has worked with the food truck industry closely for the past couple days, day and night. And after the, the last council delegation, everybody from the community and the city came up with the, with the meeting last time, and then they, they came up with key points which were emailed yesterday to all the food truck owners. The MTSA areas, they're, they're asking, were asking for the trucks to be parked in the MTSA's, applications that are already sent in. I, I don't think I need to repeat all the points, whatever's already sent. There's only just, I think, one point that's not in there. If, if there is a, let's say, there's a restriction of 50 meters from a restaurant, what if there's no restaurant within 100 meters? Are we allowed to park more trucks? That should be considered. It makes sense if there's any limits, I don't see it here, but if we could just grandfather all the trucks in, and the major concern we also had from, from bylaw or zoning was that there's food trucks that are trailers, they're not trucks, so they're not mobile, they're stationary. And in the past, there has been some businesses, there are not food trucks, they've been using trailers as storage units, and they're not allowed outside storage. And I think there's no concrete plan around that trailers used as food trucks, which should be considered, is also part of this. And that would be very helpful, and I would like anyone else to add any points.
Good morning, councillors and everybody here. I like, in January 2025, I purchased a food truck, it's going to be costing me $100,000 over there. And all the rules have been regulated over there after I purchase it. Nothing was on place that this is the thing we have to implement it. I purchased so much of things and have done all the inspection and everything, but all the rules have been impacted afterwards, and which is, which I'm not able to, I'm not able to operate my trailer and food truck right now, just because of this new rules of MTSA and 50-meter rule. But my trailer is parked in an 499 Main Street South, where no 50-meter rules was applied, and, but the trailer is all occupied from last 20 years it's been operating over there. But suddenly after almost two decades, I've been told that you are not able to operate your food truck over there because there is a new rule called MTSA, it's a primary major area, and I'm not able to operate. I would like to request that, please, this rule not be avoided, and grandfather all the food trucks right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, sitting here. Well, myself, Shekha Sharma, and I'm a single mom with two boys. It's been like 10 months I have bought a trailer, and it's not in a running condition. I have not even generated a single dollar from that, and I'm paying the rent and everything to the, because I financed it, and I'm paying everything over there, and it is parked on one location. Because before, everybody was running a trailer, so I bought a trailer because, and then after, like, I came to know that the trailers are not allowed in Brampton City. And now I am like stuck, and as, like, I'm not earning, like, from that spot. So I would request everybody, if you can help me out, to just, like, give me the permission to run the trailer. And being single, as I told you, I have a lot of responsibilities with two boys, and the liability is on me, myself alone. So I'm really in a big trouble now, because it's been like 10 months. And I have applied to every multiple, like, in locations, and every time I got denied. I don't know what reasons they were giving, I was not able to understand, because there was not a, like, you know, a solid point we can prove it. Because that is a trailer, and it is, the kitchen is built inside, and everybody was working because that is not a outdoor storage. Because in outdoor storage, you cannot run a kitchen, right? That is a difference. Only the difference is that it doesn't have an engine, it doesn't have a strating, but yes, as in, like, a food truck, we can run it, right? Because it was already and still running in the city. So my question is why only, like, to me, they are saying, every location, they are disapproving me, and it is so hard to find a location nowadays in Brampton.
Okay, thank you. That completes the delegations. For the question of why, we, the city was inundated with complaints about, about food trucks, but we're looking at the right balance to try to find out, you know, where there wasn't complaints. In some areas of this city, there wasn't complaints. Downtown, there was a lot of complaints. And so we're, we're looking at the right balance, and thank you for your delegation. I have a motion moved by Councilor Power, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh, to receive the delegation.
Yes, my humble request, please help me out in this, we would say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's 7.3. Government relations matter, we've dealt with this. Takes us to...
We'll hold that down till Council Plessey comes back, our next one. The next one is 10.23. The presentation report on the mobile licensing.
Okay, so, do we want to receive that presentation?
We have to see another session, so.
Okay.
Last week together.
Okay, sure. Do you want, we want to see the presentation? Okay. Who's doing the presentation?
I'm the president.
Through you, Chair, we have a presentation.
We have Council Portini online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As directed by council at last, the Committee of Council, we've done a consultation process with the public in regards to the mobile licensing bylaw. Let me go to the first one. So the, the first session that we spoke with was the food truck owner and operators. The four main key points that they brought up was the MTSA's, the distance limitation and the implementation period, and clarification on food trucks first, food trailers. We did have 38 attendees, which was pretty robust, given the number of food trucks that we have. In regards to the MTSA, the current limitation of 50 meters between food trucks was recognized as an issue that they were concerned about. They also raised the legal implications in the fact that numerous trucks are already there, they already have existing lease agreements that would extend beyond the proposed implementation period. This also transferred over to financial implications. Many of these food trucks are financed, and those financing agreements go beyond the implementation period. The request was that they grandfather existing food truck operators, new bylaw to apply only to new business operators only. The distance limitation, where there's 50 meters between food trucks, they raised the point that food trucks exist in a hub format, and that this creates a destination location for residents. It was put forward that people may not come to one food truck, they may not come to two, but if you have a hub of six, it now creates a destination that people will travel to. They did ask if what food was being offered would factor into any of these limitations. In regards to implementation period, the 45- 45 days was seen to be too short, and they did ask that it would be more in line with the existing leasing and financial agreements, which would be months or years. As mentioned in the last clarification, in the last delegation, they did want clarification as well in regards to food trucks first, food trailers. And the argument was put forward that outdoor storage is very clearly a transport truck or a storage container, whereas when a food truck stops operating, it now falls into that definition, yet it is clearly identified as a food truck. So people know that it's not being stored there. It's just currently not open for business. The next session that we held was in relation to property owners. We had seven property owners there, which was far fewer than the actual food truck number, but it should be noted that of those property owners, they were representing three large hubs. They also raised the same four main periods. I won't go through each of them. One of the additional things that they mentioned was the financial implications under the MTSA, and they mentioned the cost of site plans was a significant barrier. The proposed change we did point out is now a site map, so it won't be as formal, and it won't have that same cost. And under the distance limitation, in addition to explaining about the food destination hub, the property owners also raised that they have a significant impact to local businesses that have contributed to Brampton's local economy. And they just explained about how they have a positive influence on the businesses around them. The implementation period again was asked to mirror leasing and financial agreements, and they mentioned the same food trucks and food trailers. We also spoke with various council members and the final slide, things that were brought up that could be consideration, remove the MTSA component altogether and place it into the zoning bylaw, keep the MTSA component, but make it no net new food trucks in the MTSA, grandfather food trucks whose only contravention is an MTSA location. All other conditions would apply. Cap the current number of food trucks to current renewals and those currently in the process. And then a more dynamic consideration for distance between trucks. If there's one to three trucks, have five meters between them. Four plus, any additional trucks would have 10 meters between them. And distance from restaurant, if, or for a fixed food establishment, if there's one to three trucks, it would be 50 meters. That's in the current bylaw, and it's not being recommended to be changed, even in the proposed one. What has been also considered was the, anything in addition to three trucks, you add 25 meters for each additional food truck. That's the summary of the consultations that were received.
Just to confirm, if these changes are accepted, we're not going to have food trucks in the downtown where we've been inundated with complaints. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We really need to, if certain ones were put in place, that is correct. So this was what was being considered. We were hoping to get direction on which one of these the council would wish to go forward with.
So I believe the deputy mayor was going to move a motion. I just want to hear to make sure it doesn't affect what we've heard loud and clear is a frustrating point in the downtown. To the deputy mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And first of all, I really want to thank staff. I did not know much about this issue, and I want to thank the community members for coming out and educating. I want to thank staff for having a collaborative consensus-based decision forward, whether it's Lawrence Department, Steve's department, everybody else that came together. And I see Kevin and yourself, Robert. So what I'm thinking, instead of just rushing, we'll pick this and this and this, the staff want to come back, and that incorporates what the mayor just said, and some of the ideas we talked about for, and I'll work with you, maybe seconded by Mayor Brown, a final draft motion. Instead of trying to do it right now and be like, we'll go with this and this, give us two weeks, and we'll make sure it covers all the concerns, and then we'll put it in place.
We're sure. Councillor Sante, is that good? Okay. So motion is to defer two weeks to work on...
We'll refer it back to staff, and we'll work on the motion together.
Okay. All those in favor on the deferral from councillor Singh? Motion carries. This takes us to the next item, which is... Yes? 10.4.1, which is... No. Yeah, we already deferred that, so next one. Nawas-Brimley application. I can speak to that first. I had asked that we hold this until we know if the Housing Accelerator funding would be continued if the government was reelected, because there was a clear divergence in what the opposition promised to cancel that fund and the government promising to continue it. Obviously, what we've done through the Housing Accelerator Fund across the city has been incredible, whether it's Habitat, whether it's with Home Opportunities. We really put those funds to good use, and I think this is another great example of that. So I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to move the motion. I know he has been a passionate advocate for the Nawas-Brimley application. Okay. Happy to second it. And I know councillor Keenan might have had a question, but I'm not sure if he is... No, no question? Okay.
No, no Keenan.
No. Okay. All those in favor?
Well, which one are you on?
Nawas.
Nope. Councillor Keenan held it, so you need to wait for him to come back.
Are you councillor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, first of all, a great fund, a great initiative, so really supportive of it. I just want to get some clarification from staff to make sure that, you know, we've had a few applications in, and we set those guidelines around what's supposed to be happening. So I want to confirm that this also follows those same guidelines, as well as that those people are, you know, no one's jumping any queues as far as people can, I know they've been saying, hey, no, I don't know how the money's flowing, and...
Brampton first.
What's that?
Brampton first.
Well, 100%. But I just want to make sure that those other organizations are receiving their funds as well, and that the, you know, good that the election went away of keeping our Howzer Accelerator Fund. So hopefully those funds keep coming in, and we can keep doing more of this. But if the commissioner could just confirm that that is the case.
Through you, Mayor Brown. Through to councillor Keenan, that's absolutely the case. This is one of the good news stories that has come from the council-endorsed Housing CIP program, actually, where we'll leverage monies from the Housing Accelerator Fund. So all of the protocols and practices that have been in the previous examples and brought before council will apply here.
Thank you. That's all for me, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Councillor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to go more direct question. Has Home Opportunities received their funding yet?
Through the mayor, through you councillor Plessy. I'll defer to staff just to see if the...
Sure.
I know we've gotten direction to start sending the funding in tranches to Home Opportunities. I'm not sure how much has been sent already, but I've seen lots of correspondence. Melinda, maybe if you could just address that.
Over the next year?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I'd like to put a motion that no other funding be provided until Home Opportunities. The first one that came before council, the one that delivers the most affordable housing, is provided until they receive their funding. Thank you for all the work that you've done. I know you guys have done a fantastic job, and it was kind of that staple. And I know it's difficult, because they're delivering so many affordable housing. But from my side of the table, enough is enough. I want to build affordable housing, and everybody keeps coming and jumping before the queue, and that's not fair. Because funding is becoming an issue. Who's to say? Yes, the federal government, we was elected, and hopefully they continue with the funding, but this isn't fair.
So just from a budget structure, councillor Plessy, this is already, for Home Opportunities, that's already assigned, as long as they meet their legal agreement with the city?
They have. But why, why over the next year is...
That's a question. I'm saying there's two separate... Through you, Mayor Brown. Through to councillor Plessy. The agreement with Home Opportunities has certain milestones in which they receive the money, as opposed to all of the money upfront. But the money is secured for Home Opportunities.
Is secure.
Maybe just share what the milestones are. If you want to remove the milestones, that would be the discretion of council. Through you, Mayor Brown. That report or that agreement was brought forward to council just recently, I believe, in the last month.
Special council meeting.
Yeah, with the milestones. I don't have that before me, but I can rest assured that the $19 million for Home Opportunities is secured and will flow at the various milestones.
Okay. Can you, do you know the milestones? Can you speak to them? If you don't, if you can't, that's okay. High level, high level, Nash, please.
Through the chair. Councillor, this has been detailed in the agreement that we have worked over almost six months now with Home Opportunities to put together, and they're really layered in a way to manage the risk of when the land is become, when it becomes available, when the different construction milestones are achieved, and then towards the end, when it becomes available for transfer to the end users there. So it's all related, and it's fairly complicated, but it's all been agreed and worked very much in details with Home Opportunities to put that in place. And like Steve mentioned, it came to council very recently for approval, which you did. Thank you.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't have had to, but it did. It's two years from the beginning of when this started, and one year from when we started talking about having the legal agreement. So, and yet it's still a year away, and I don't know the milestones, and I haven't spoken to Home Opportunities. Just from my point of view, it just doesn't look right. So I'll leave it. I'll wait, but I'll have the conversation, maybe with all of us in a room, to find out if these milestones are what all parties are agreeing to.
They did agree to them. They signed to it.
Let's just, let me understand.
Absolutely.
And also, is there an opportunity, are they waiting for these milestones because of those, of those conditions, before they start delivering the houses that are needed? Can we encourage and help them deliver affordable housings, affordable houses faster? Maybe that's the conversation that we should be, we could be having.
Through the chair, if I can just add one thing, none of the milestones delays their ability to progress with the construction as soon as possible. So they can go as fast as they can, and the funds will be made available.
Okay, good.
We actually even took, like, some of their risk upfront on the city, as opposed to other lenders, in order to facilitate that.
Okay. Thanks, Nash. Thank you.
And councillor Plessy, if there's any condition that seems onerous, we can certainly revisit that. I think it's based on the transfer of the land to the Home Opportunities. Okay, so the motion that was tabled, all those in, oh, sorry, councillor Power? You had, no? Deputy Mayor Singh.
Yeah, I just want to give the confidence. Staff was very clear. This money has been pegged, so there's, I don't want to think there's trade-offs being made at all, and I'm happy to see staff working on it, and I know we'll get all these shovels in the ground very soon. Thank you.
And just to add to that, Nawas, Home Opportunities, Habitat, they're all great projects, and excited for all of them. All those in favor? Motion carries. To our next item, we'll actually go back to the held down one from councillor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I originally asked for this, and thank you to staff for putting the work together. I don't have the item up. I think it's just important, one of the items specifically related to the roles and responsibilities, and I had a quick discussion with Mayor Brown, and he suggested that the people that are in, that are allowed in the, no, sorry, the, when, when items become in-camera items that shouldn't technically be online versus in-person, it's his responsibility. And I think he, he came up with a great suggestion. It should be the responsibility versus city solicitor with the discussion with the mayor, and I think if...
That was my understanding, the way it was supposed to be.
And, but that wasn't clear, and I thought that, I also thought that too, but in, in the report, it specifically says the mayor's roles and responsibilities. So if we can just have you included, Samir, in that, I think it's...
Through the chair, if that's the will of council, we can clarify that. It would be the mayor or the city solicitor in consult or...
City Solicitor in consultation with the mayor.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think any one member of council should have a power like that, not that it's a huge power, but it's, take it away from the politicians, and when it should be, it's the legal side of things. You went to school for all those years.
Through the chair, I'm fine with that. I just turned to the clerk to see if...
And I think to go back, the original basis for this was to make sure in-camera material was not inadvertently leaked out, if it's a, it's a sensitive topic, to make sure that it is in-person, and the paperwork is distributed in-person as an extra measure of caution.
Yep. And then just in terms of all the other, you know, responsibilities and rules around in-camera, then I think when it ultimately comes down to you, Madam Clerk, that, and if you need somebody, because you're working, right, during that process, but if you need somebody to say, now, the door needs to be closed, you know, it goes to the CAO determine who's in the meeting. Each department head will provide you and the CAO with, with the staff members that are coming in for those items. But ultimately, it has to go on you. You have to be the hammer, if I can say. And no member of council or anybody else can go against... Okay. But, and then thank you to you and your staff for providing that information. Appreciate them doing the work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mayor Brown. We can tidy up the wording and just clarify that the in-person is determined by the city solicitor in consultation with the mayor. And then can we move forward as amended?
Yes.
And we'll post the, we'll send out the final version to everybody. Okay, thank you.
Moved by councillor Plessy. Oh, sorry, councillor Mederos. Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fine with that. The only thing I would hope is that the timelines, that, you know, decisions in terms of in-person or not in-person be communicated accordingly, so we have enough time to make arrangements if we need to be here or not. Like, you know, no last minute, sort of day of, you know, we're changing it. That's, that's my only concern.
Through you, Mayor Brown. We would try to send that message out as soon as we have an agenda item that would require that. So that's generally the Thursday before the meeting or Friday.
Okay. Moved by councillor Plessy. Seconded by councillor Mederos. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our next item. To the clerk. We're at closed session. Okay, it is 11:23. Only two items. Any council? How long do you want for lunch, or do you want to wrap up? Okay, I see councillor Mederos, Power, Singh, Keenan, Santos asking to wrap up. 12 o'clock. Compromise. 12 o'clock, meeting camera. Okay? Twelve o'clock, compromise, twelve o'clock meeting camera, okay? Twelve o'clock, compromise, twelve o'clock meeting camera, okay?
So we have two items that were in camera.
Yes.
Nineteen point one was approved on consent, nineteen point two was considered a closed session and direction was given.
Nineteen point four was approved on consent including that motion to be considered an open session. Moved by Deputy Mayor Singh, seconded by Counselor Plessey. All those in favor, motion carries. Nineteen point five was considered and direction was given. That takes us to a confirming by law.
We can do the bylaw, I'm sure.
Yeah. Our bylaw motion, we didn't do before. I have a motion moved by Counselor Power, seconded by Counselor Tor, to approve bylaws eighty-one twenty twenty-five to ninety-four twenty twenty-five inclusive. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our confirming by law. I have a motion moved by Counselor Plessey, seconded by Counselor Santos, to approve the confirming by law to confirm the proceedings and decisions from the meeting. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to adjournment. I have a motion moved by Counselor Tor, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh, to adjourn today's meeting.